Call the order. Meeting of the Sebastopol Town Board. It's 7:01, or seven o'clock, Monday, March 25, 2013. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. All stand please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Chairman Zipper is excused. Supervisor Tice.
Here.
Vice Chairman and Supervisor Germain.
Here.
Supervisor Stavinas.
Here.
And Supervisor Wolfle.
Here.
Okay, I see we have a number of people in the audience. More so than usual. If you would, tell us who you are and just the reason why you are attending tonight. We can start with the, I guess, the board itself here.
Linda Wade, Clerk Treasure.
Chuck Tice, Supervisor.
Tom Germain, Supervisor.
Dan Wolfle, I'm here because you called a meeting.
John Stavinas, I'm here for the same reason.
I'm here to talk about Door 44 Wherryery.
And our husband Steve Johnson.
Steve Lopinson, Graham and Tommy's Country Store. Interested in Door 44's wherry license and kiosk.
Victoria Serenich, I'm here from the League of Women Voters as an observer, and I live in Sebastopol.
Dell Herbold, Rural Insurance, here to talk to you about first responders coverage.
Okay, the agenda has been properly noticed.
Yes, it has.
We need a motion to adopt.
Do we adopt? The agenda is printed.
Second. Second, Dan?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The agenda has been adopted. 7:05, we have listed here as a special report provided by Agent Dell Herbold. He will cover questions and answers, and he is with Rural Mutual Insurance. So Dell, you can stand next to the podium there and give us your presentation.
Linda, I think the mics might be up a bit high. I hear an echo. I don't know if you guys do.
I don't.
No?
Are you hearing any echo out there?
Seems like it's a little bounced tonight. Okay.
Turn the gain down just a little.
Well, the reason I'm here is, I think it was in February, I was told that there was a situation up in Jacksonport where one of the volunteers got hurt, and they submitted the claim to the county and it was denied. And we had another one now in Bailey's Harbor, and since then had that one taken care of through the town's insurance. But what happened, this is, a lot of this is through word of mouth, but what happened was the county evidently switched insurance somewhere along the line. I haven't gotten exact answer from anybody when this happened. But when they switched insurance, the coverage for the first responders was dropped. And now, you don't really have to get real excited about it, but, because the coverage, if it's not on the county, the town's insurance will cover it. But it's covered a little differently. The county was covering them under workers' comp. Under the town, they're only covered under the med pay. So whatever you have for med pay, and you currently have $5,000 med pay, they're covered under that. If they would get hurt, coverage for themselves, their liability would be covered under the town, which is $5 million per occurrence, $10 million aggregate. So you'd still have that. Now, my understanding is they're working on a new agreement. The county is getting a lot of pressure from the town board members, because I got about, I think, six or seven townships that have first responders, and they're real concerned about this. And there's three other townships south of the bay that are in the same situation as you are, where they don't have a fire department where they can attach the volunteers to, so, or the first responders to. So they're all waiting to talk in their meetings about adding the first responders onto their workers' comp policy in the interim. And what that does, it would require a different category for the workers' comp, a different class. And it's basically under ambulance service type coverage. The rate for that is $9.59 per hundred. So it's a significant rate. And the way you would figure it is you'd take the payroll that you pay for the first responders in a year, and you would multiply it by three, which is a factor they use for 24-hour service, and then divide by 100, multiply that by the $9.59, and you get what your premium is for the year for the first responders. And I think Linda had figured it out, about $5,000, something like that.
Well, we pay the first responders on a per diem, and now, as of last year's budget, we're also paying them on a per call. So I believe we budgeted around $6,500 this year.
Yes, about that.
So, based on $6,500, Dell, I can tell you exactly what we have budgeted.
But I guess my question is...
$6,600, I'm sorry.
You know, these are our second jobs, third jobs, whatever, and so we make maybe $100 a month.
Yeah.
Are you going to pay workers' comp on that $100, or what we make in our other job?
No.
Because you're going to lose a lot of first responders.
We would be paid workers' comp based on what your level would make if you were working for a emergency services unit.
So, a first, an EMR, first responder, if they were working full-time, 24 hours a day, you would make that pay?
No. You would make the pay that you would make if you were working at that, at that job for a, like the county of Door. They hired you as a full-time.
But there's quite a jump if you're hired as an EMR, or if you're hired as a paramedic.
Yeah.
There's quite a jump between the two.
Right. But whatever the level would be, they'd have to come up with a, with a number for that. Just like the firemen, for example, that are with a fire department in the county. If they're hurt, you know, like Bailey's Harbor, one of those guys that's hurt, we would go to Sturgeon Bay and say, okay, this guy is a lieutenant here in Bailey's Harbor. What does your lieutenant make at the fire department? That's what he would get paid, based on that salary that the lieutenant in Sturgeon Bay makes.
But you wouldn't have anything to base it on, because first responders or EMRs would not get hired as a full-time ambulance attendant, because you have to be up, up two more levels, I think, to EMT basic.
Yeah. They'd have to come up with a number somewhere.
Well, yeah, I want to know that number.
I don't know what that number is.
That's what we're trying to get at.
Yeah, I don't know what that number is.
Well, how would you find that number out?
I'd probably have to call workers' comp claims and see if they've had any situations like that, how they handled it before, where they got the rate from.
Well, that's the number that we want to know, because, you know, I mean, like I said, every one of the first responders in Sebastopol has a completely different job, and they make a lot more money than...
I know.
What they do at, doing, being a first responder.
Yeah, I know. But you want to get something if you get hurt.
Well, yeah, because everybody's still got bills to pay.
But whether you're covered under the, under the town's insurance, or you're covered under the county's insurance, you're going to be in the same boat.
Okay.
Because they're going to handle it the same way. Workers' comp is workers' comp. So if they couldn't come up with a rate, you know, say the insurance company couldn't come up with a rate, they'd call the bureau and ask them.
I see.
They'd have to. Somewhere along the line, they'd have to come up with something.
Right.
To figure it. And it's kind, both the fire departments and the, and the first responders are kind of a unique situation.
Right, I agree.
In the way they're, they're handled, and...
Well, yeah, because it's, they should have never got...
And the rates aren't, the rates aren't comparable either, because, for example, the rate for years would be like $1,870. Well, shoot, that don't go very far as far as, you know, if you have to pay out any claims.
Right.
And I don't know, you'd have to check with the county, but in the, right, 35 years I've been selling this stuff, I hadn't seen a first responder get hurt, that they, that they filed a claim. Maybe you knew it, but I hadn't seen any, that I, that anybody told me about.
We just had, we just had two of them in the last, and that's what brought this to the...
Yeah, I mean, but these are the first two that I've seen, as far as I can remember.
Yeah, but it's something that's got to be addressed, because you can't have a catch-22 where the town, you think you're going to get paid from the town, and, or you think you're going to get paid from the county.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we, we can't go out unless we get paged out of the county.
Right.
But then the town pays us, so it's a, it's a fine line on both sides.
Right. But it's always been, because when, when they first set this up, it was set up when Brussels established their ambulance service out there. I was in with them when they set it up, and the guy that runs the ambulance service, I forget his name, he was there too, and a number of the county board people, and it was set up at that time that when the first responders were called out, they were insured by the county.
Right.
And it's always been that way, but, like I said, somebody dropped the ball somewhere, and nobody's come forward yet to tell me who did and when.
So, did I miss it? Did the county pick it back up now?
They're supposedly working on a, on a new contract. That's what they told me, or that's what they heard anyway.
But it's just in the works?
Yeah.
So...
So I've called, or contacted all of the...
Yeah.
I contacted all the townships and departments that I had insured and said, hey, I don't know what's going on, but I wouldn't sit on it, you know, until something happens. But I can try to find out for you, John, what, how they would handle it, but I don't have any, you know, solid numbers on what they would do.
Well, I mean, I don't exactly need a solid number, but I need somewhere's close to...
Yeah.
You know, I mean, not just, because, like I said, we get paid for meetings, and we get paid...
Right.
$10, $20 for a call now, so that's probably, somewhere's in the neighborhood of $100 a month.
Sure.
I might make a little more than that at the phone company.
I hope so.
I would do.
I got a phone bill like everybody else.
That's true, so...
But, yeah, I don't know how the heck they would figure it, really, to tell you the truth. I just found out about this last week, so it's kind of new to me, too. I had to talk to somebody else to find out how the heck they, they would even come up with a coverage under workers' comp.
Right.
The first person I talked to couldn't tell me. I ended up talking to somebody else, mentioned this, the way you could do it would be to add this emergency services...
Right.
Form onto the workers' comp policy, so...
Because they would have, the lowest that they pay full-time would be EMTs.
Yeah.
Based, so, but they would, yeah, I would be curious on what that formula is and how that would work.
I don't know, do you know what EMTs make? I don't even know.
Not for sure, no.
It'd have to be, you know, less than that.
Well, it'd have to be less than the paramedics, or the paramedics would be mad, so...
Some, just for your information, too, with most of the fire departments that I have insured, what they, what they do now for their volunteers is, besides workers' comp, they take out a accident sickness policy. And that accident sickness policy's got a death benefit on it, but it also has monthly income on it, too, to supplement workers' comp, because workers' comp's only going to pay you 70%, and it's going to, you know, so whatever it is, it's only going to be 70% of that.
Right.
So this would give you another, and that, that policy runs about $100 per person, so it's not outrageous premium for it. It's got a lot of extra tuets and whistles in it, too, if you get, if somebody comes out of an accident that's really bad, and they have to get some treatment for that, and some coverage for that. If you have to get killed, there's coverage for your wife and kids, and stuff like that. So it's an interesting kind of policy, but that's something that, if, if this became necessary, that you could address.
Right.
For the first responders.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Dell, you had suggested, right now, our medical payments coverage is $5,000, and you said if we wanted to consider increasing that to 10, you thought that would be about an extra $40 annually?
Yes.
Okay, and our renewal term is May 1st, so if we decide to go with the workers' comp or whatever, this is something we can always add on. We don't have to have a decision by May 1st, do we?
If you went with the workers' comp, you wouldn't need it. Workers' comp would cover the medical.
Workers' comp would cover the medical?
Yeah.
What would our, based on $6,600 per year, which is what we estimated to pay the first responders, what would our workers' comp premium be?
$1,870 more.
Okay.
Which can now...
And do other businesses, or, do they normally provide workers' comp coverage for volunteer services? I mean, we, they are volunteers.
The area that has that of volunteers.
Is just towns?
Yeah, there's fire departments and first responders. I don't have any other businesses that...
Would you say that the other municipalities in Door County all provide workers' comp for their first responder volunteers?
I think they want to.
That you're aware of? They want to?
Are, are, most of the ones I've talked to so far are in a position where they had their meetings scheduled already, and they didn't have it on the agenda, so they couldn't make a decision. That's the way most of them were. So I'm waiting for their next meeting in order for them to make their decision. Hopefully, the county gets them done by then, but if they don't, that's what they'll have to do.
And then, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
And then, on a different subject, I think we had clarified this once before. For an off-premises sign that belongs to the town on property not owned by the town, but under a long-term lease, are we covered for anybody that might get hurt crawling in or about that sign, or...
Well, the sign, the town is, is covered for any liability exposure that they have. And if you want that sign covered, it has to be, if it's off-premises, it has to be listed on, on the policy for that location.
And as far, do we put a value on it, or do we just say the location, or...
Either one. If you, if you want to put a location on it, if you don't want to put any coverage on it, you can just list the location.
Okay, well, would that cover, like, vandalism and things like that?
On the sign?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's all risk coverage on the sign.
And what do you think that would run?
Yeah.
And what do you think that might run per year? Let's say the, let's say the sign is going to cost $30,000.
The sign is going to be $30,000?
Well, let's say $25,000 then. Okay, it's going to cost $25,000.
Your sign insured now?
I think if the cutoff is $25,000, it's $24.99.
Your, your sign right now, we've got $28,000 on the, on the sign out front, the electric one?
No, not that sign. An off-premises sign that's going to cost...
Yeah, I'm just using that as an example. It's costing you $401 right now for $28,000 on that one. So you've just...
But that sign out there's not going to be anything, anywhere close to that.
Yeah, the actual cost is about $7,000. The rest of it's landscaping, pavements, upkeep.
So just on the sign itself? Not the landscaping, or the parking lot, or anything like that? We just, the sign itself?
The $7,000?
A problem, make it 10, just to make it, round it out.
Okay. $146, I think.
Could you make it 145? Okay, just kidding.
Even 100.
Yeah. Okay.
$143.
Discount discount already.
I got one more question. Is there any kind of a safeguard we could put in there so that the county doesn't drop the ball again? Because I know 10 years ago, we had this, about this same conversation with the county, and they guaranteed us that we were covered.
What you could do, if we find out the county's not, or is doing it, is put that category in on your workers' comp policy, and just write in there, "if any." Don't put a payroll amount in there, just put "if any." Then if you, at the end of the year, if you don't have any, if you don't have that problem, you just, Linda just doesn't report a payroll for that.
I see.
If you do have it, then Linda reports a payroll, and you pay the freight out. You can do that.
Okay.
But right now, I asked them if I could add it without, you know, doing that, and they said, no, they wanted to add it now with a dollar value. And you would add it with a dollar value now, because you'd need it, if you need it anyway.
Right.
But if it's not needed, you know, I would explain to them it's not needed now, but we want it on there, like you said, and they'd probably go along with it then.
Okay.
Yet, the other thing, too, I, I mentioned on the medical payments, too, was, in the past, it was $5,000 was the limit on medical payments, and now that limit is $10,000. And you can raise it to the, that 10 if you want it to, for 40 bucks. Which is probably a good idea nowadays with the cost of health insurance care, or healthcare. Because that pays irrespective of who's at fault. So if somebody gets hurt on premises, a lot of times you can eliminate a lawsuit if you can take care of them. And they can actually use that as a, as a payment to pay them off, to get out of a big lawsuit.
Think we should do that?
Okay, any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dell. Next item is the minutes from the previous meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Any questions, corrections, changes? As the chairman would say, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll approve the minutes. I'll second.
February 18. Motion by John, second by Chuck. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved as presented. Financial reports, Linda, if you would.
Financial reports for the month ending in February 2013. Obviously, we've had a lot of tax receipts come in. Budget versus actual, January again through the end of February. And also our list of transactions for the month of February. Receipts and disbursements.
Any questions? Need a motion to approve the financial?
Move that we approve the financial report.
I'll second that.
Chuck's motion, John's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Financial reports are approved as presented. Approval of vouchers, bills, and claims. Has everyone read the packet?
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Dell.
Thank you. Good night.
Everyone's...
Move that we approve vouchers, bills, and claims.
Me in a second.
Second, yeah.
Chuck introduced a motion, seconded by Dan, to approve the vouchers, bills, claims for February 19, 2013, through March 25, 2013. All in favor of the motion? Signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Oral committee reports and committee minutes. Does anyone have any committee reports they'd like to present? We have, let's see, planning commission minutes here. We have the tourism zone commission minutes. So, let's see, John, do you have anything to add to the planning commission?
No.
Nothing there, huh?
No.
I guess, at the tourism zone commission meeting, it was brought up that the state is not going to fund the water quality program for public swimming beaches this year. And through the commission, Tourism Zone Commission and the Sturgeon Bay Visitors Bureau, they are requesting that the municipalities help, along with other donations that we may be able to get, to continue this program. Program runs around $56,000 a year. And they have a list of all the public beaches throughout the county, and they have a way of figuring which beaches are the most important, the secondary ones, and then the least important, as far as use goes. Those that are used the most get tested three times a week. The next category is twice a week, and the least-used beaches get checked once, once a week. And at this point, the Sturgeon Bay Visitor, or the Door County Visitors Bureau, has pledged $5,000 toward this program. The county of Door is still, through Maureen Murphy, the county exec, is, is working toward trying to get monies. She told us she had approximately $3,000 in the health and welfare program that may be used, and she was going to approach the county board and see if they couldn't increase that amount. The town will be receiving a letter, along with all the other municipalities throughout the county, requesting that each municipality donate $1,000 this year, and commit to doing the same next year. Now, the fact was brought up that the budget cycle has already gone through. The monies are tight in a lot of situations, that it may be hard to come up with that money. But through the Visitors Bureau, we have a contingency fund. And Jack volunteered that if the town could not meet that commitment this year, he would front that money for us if we would commit to refunding him the following year, when we could put it on a budget item. So that's where we stand on that right now. If any other organization would like to come forward and help with this program, it's been suggested that Liden Drive Association, Bay Shore Drive Association, we got Land Trust, and other types of programs, or organizations out there. But the total cost is going to be in the neighborhood of $56,000. So if we can come up with that money, we can continue the program. If we don't, and we have some bad times, and the word gets out, and publicized, and newspapers and that, you can just imagine what it could do to the tourism industry for Door County. Has the DNR been approached, since a lot of the beach, high, high population, high-use beaches are in the DNR area? I don't know if they have been approached today, but they definitely will be. They were on the list.
Any questions?
When did they start that beach testing? What time, you know, timeline? I think they were talking like the middle of May. Middle of May?
What, what will they be testing for?
This year, it may be a little later, depending on the cold, you know, it's, the beaches don't warm up, we don't have to worry about them.
Testing for what?
Testing for E. coli and...
Two and a half feet ice on the bed.
Hazardous contaminants. Program, program's been going on, I believe, for three years now, so...
All right, anything else? Dan, do you have any committee reports you'd like to make?
None.
You are on the list here for the lodge, right? Okay. Next order of business is under pending business. And this will be status discussion and take action tonight. And that is the Door County Coastal Byway Kiosk issue and/or project. The first sentence we have here is review the previous action regarding funding. Back in our January meeting, a motion was presented and passed that essentially... that essentially said our maximum exposure for this kiosk would be five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Assuming that could, we could be limited to that amount of exposure, we would go ahead and approve the kiosk. And the location stated in that minutes, in those minutes of January twenty-eighth, were to install that at Highway forty-two fifty-seven, which is the location of Grandma Tommy's. So that was the game plan. And in the meantime, Chuck, with all the help from myself, we put together a financial plan and essentially got the necessary funds. The funds came from a variety of different places, some were private donations, some were state grants. But the long story short is, it seems that we've met the criteria that was presented in the January twenty-eighth meeting. At this point, I'll turn it over to Chuck, and Chuck, you can go into a little bit more detail on the finances.
Well, I passed out tonight a March thirteen, two thousand and thirteen list of all the costs and their, or each part of the project and the costs attributed to it. As we get down to line fifteen, to put this kiosk at Grandma Tommy's on the corner of Highways forty-two fifty-seven and Forest Road, as was proposed to this board over the past few meetings, the total cost of that project would be twenty-four thousand seven hundred and three dollars. The only thing left hanging for the town to do would be they are required to put in nine hundred dollars worth of in-kind contribution, which was figured to be the actual labor in helping to put this sign up. So, and we've also got contractors working in this. There will be stonework and masonry work done, blacktopping, landscaping will all be paid for. So it's the actual physical, standing these poles up, putting the top on, and attaching the signs to the poles is where our commitment would lie. With that project, the National Scenic Byways Program grant funds committed through the Wisconsin Department of DNR are six thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars. We have a local grant pledge for five thousand dollars. That pledge is hinged on the fact that this project has to be completed as it is proposed. If we make any major changes in it, they will not grant the funds. That's where the biggest problem came, trying to come up with the remainder of the funding and to finish this project. The town of Sebastopol has committed the fifty-one thousand, fifty-one hundred and fifty dollars, leaving a remaining balance of eight thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars. Now, with a lot of effort and help from Steve Robenstein, Steve has gone out and managed to contact some of our contractors that supplied estimates for this project and either have them reduce those costs or completely donate those costs, which reduced the project down. And in a couple of instances where he could not achieve that, he managed to find other contractors that would do the work under those types of conditions. A mason volunteered to donate sometime. Another mason crew decided to donate all of their work. So, if I can find my right slip now, we have managed to come up with six thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars in reductions on the costs of this project to date. Steve and I feel this is still going to continue. Steve is continuing to work at some of the contractors, reducing the prices even further. We have a offer right now pending on park benches. We're still waiting to contact the people that do blacktopping and try to make a deal there. And what actually winds up yet is we are, we have a twelve hundred and fifty dollar grant application out that has not been, we have not heard anything on yet, so there would be some more funds saved there. What Steve did was give us a letter stating that through all these efforts and continuing efforts, he is personally guaranteeing that the eight thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars will be met. If we don't achieve that through reductions and new estimates, he said he would pay the bill, up to the cost that this project was originally estimated at. So I feel today that we met the requirements of the first motion.
Well, not technically, because in the minutes, it was supposed to be if we didn't get the grant money, that that kiosk was supposed to come back here.
Yeah, it says, it says grant monies, but grant monies can come from private concerns, they can come from you, they can come from me. And it's not necessarily a government funding operation in terms of fulfilling a grant obligation. So anyone can contribute money, and that's considered a grant. So, under those terms, it is, it does satisfy the terms. The thing was, as long as our exposure didn't exceed fifty-one fifty, it was a green light. And essentially, that's where we are because of Steve's commitment to the eighty-one, eighty-one thirty-six, or a little over eight thousand dollars. Of course, that number has been reduced significantly, so we are not exposed any more than fifty-one fifty.
But in the long term, we could be, because who's going to snow plow it? Who's going to mow the lawn? Is there going to be lighting there? And I know Steve and I have talked that that intersection is an unsafe intersection, and we don't want any more traffic. Because you have that one grass driveway there that I think is going to be right in front of a parking lot, where people are going to pull into the parking lot and pull right out onto the road there. You know?
Can I speak?
Yeah.
Forest Road, as you well know, I asked the town to contact the Department of DOT because if they're going to turn off on Forest Road, they're going to turn off.
Right.
The northbound traffic goes to deceleration lane to go in. Southbound traffic, they want to turn in to the first driveway, the north driveway. They can, because if the traffic ain't go wrong, because they got a bypass lane. But yes, would I like to see a bypass lane? If they miss the first driveway, the southbound traffic misses the first driveway. There's a bypass lane on the, on the, like Forest Road, on the west side of the road, turning onto Forest Road. Yes, I would like to see that, would it make it safer? Yes. I have contacted Transportation, I have contacted the towns of Astable, I let them know. It's not going to, it's not going to stop people from turning on the Forest Road with having this kiosk there, if that's what you're thinking, John.
No, I just think it's going to add more traffic to that corner. You know, and I don't like where they could, where that, I looked at it tonight, and I'm pretty sure that one of those parking stalls is going to line up almost like that driveway you got in that grass. And I'm worried about people pulling right out of there or using that as another driveway.
Then we would have to rope it off or something like that.
That is one...
Or put some stones there.
That is one item that Steve and I had talked about, and we intend to block that driveway some way so that the public cannot use it.
Okay.
At this point, you don't want to take it out because it's grandfathered in. And so, but we can block it by, like Steve said, using stones in front of it, landscaping around it so that it is not accessible to the public. I'm sure the highway department would be right there and demand it be removed if it was started being used on a regular basis. It is a farm driveway at this point, and that's the way it'll stay.
So what about, like, are we going to have lighting there?
We don't have, intend to have any lighting on this kiosk.
How about...
We've talked about maintenance, and there again, if we get the go-ahead tonight, Steve and I will sit down and start working on a long-term agreement, a lease, more or less, for this kiosk to be there. And all the necessary facts pertaining to it as maintenance and safety issues and so forth. At this point, I mean, we've just been discussing a few things at this point. I don't know that it's really necessary to bring them out, but a few of the items that we are concerned about, like mowing, grass and that. Steve said he's got to mow the grass anyway, it wouldn't cost him anymore to go around the kiosk. Matter of fact, there'd be less now because part of it's blacktopped and concreted over. And if it gets down to the fact that that kiosk does need to be open throughout the winter dictated by state, then the town would have to pick up the snow plowing in the wintertime. We've discussed with the parks chairman or committee member. Our park employees go to town several times a week for various reasons. And it would not hurt them or affect their budget to have them stop and police the area for garbage and that when they go past. So I think we have everything pretty well covered as far as our agreement and that. When we sit down and get going at it, it's going to come back to the board for final approval anyway, so. If you do have concerns at this point, if you let us know, we can definitely discuss them.
Yeah, they're valid issues, John. We'll just have to see how they play out, but I think the key objective here tonight is address the finance part of it, just to make sure that we did meet that.
And then, the cost issue.
I think we do have to realize this kiosk is going to have ongoing costs. There's going to be some general maintenance to it, it's got to be insured.
Every time you come to a meeting, this kiosk goes up in price, it's like, holy smokes. So...
That's because all these things keep creeping up that we didn't think about in the beginning. If you look back at the original kiosk, a two-post wooden structure with the four signs on it, was supposed to be put up for somewhere around two thousand dollars.
Right, and now we're at twenty-four?
The powers that be decided they didn't like that kiosk any longer and chose a more expensive model. And then, through other discussions, the location became a problem for the town of Sebastopol. If you look at Sebastopol, we are the entrance to the coastal byway. And the highway splits just as it enters the town of Sebastopol. And to do justice in our town, we should probably have two kiosks then, one on each highway. It was decided that it was more reasonable to put one kiosk up and put it at the entrance. We didn't own any property there. That's where the first concern, and then we had a volunteer offer to put it on property with a few conditions. But in order to make this thing look presentable and actually a nice piece to help on that property, plus the fact that it's the entrance to our town, the project did grow considerably from what some of the other kiosks throughout the county are going to be.
I agree.
But I do believe the majority of funds now have been collected or pledged. And the costs to the county are going to be within the fifty-one fifty that we agreed to. So I believe the project could move forward at this point.
The only thing, the other concern I got is, it seems like every time we get into a deal with the coastal byways is we have to pay our money upfront, and then maybe we'll get it back later. You know, can we switch that around? Why don't we just, you know, not pay it out right away? Because we still, we still got nineteen thousand dollars that we paid before, and we don't have anything back on that yet.
We can blame ourselves partially for that, because we were notified right in the beginning that the grant through the Federal Highway Department was a pass-through grant to the State Department of Transportation, which in turn, it is a reimbursable grant to the participants. So we have to spend the money and complete the project as planned before they will pay the bills. And the town has been putting off the decision on this kiosk for almost two years now. So the project is dragging way beyond its expected...
But how many other kiosks in the county are up?
None are up yet.
So then we're not dragging our feet?
I said, we're not the only ones.
Okay.
I said, they all are. But we are expecting to receive these roof panels, or the wave rooftop in April. And the wooden poles should be here within a couple of weeks also.
When do we get the panels, or are they here?
Our panels have not even been started yet. We have all the draft material for them, but we can't do anything any further until we decide where we're going to put it. And in reality, that's actually holding up all the other panels too. Because the first panel is a map of the system, and it shows with a star where each kiosk is located. And the geographical coordinates will be posted at that spot also. So until Sebastopol gets going here and pins this location down, we are holding up everything right now. I agree that we put out over sixteen thousand dollars into this project already, and we're holding the bag for it. And that money should have been returned to our coopers last year. And it hasn't happened yet, so.
Right. We just keep forking it out, forking it out with maybe getting it back, you know?
We will get it back if we finish the project. The grant has been awarded, so.
So we need a motion then to just move ahead with this?
Yeah.
I would make the motion that the kiosk project has met the funding concerns of the board, and I move that the project be approved for installation at Grandma Tommy's as proposed. And a formal agreement, including the lease terms, is in the, to be in process of being completed between the town of Sebastopol and the SKL LLC, which is Grandma Tommy's.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
I guess just, I know you, Steve, you had said ten years?
Yes.
I would like to see that longer than ten years if it does, I mean, some kind of a, I mean, ten years, you could say, see ya, get out of here. Cut your poles down, I mean...
It's a long time.
I know.
Could become great-grandmother Grandma Tommy's.
But, you know, I mean...
So when you, when you look at a lease agreement, like I said, we originally asked for twenty, we're hanging around ten right now, we may be able to adjust that. But there will also have to be clauses in there about extensions beyond the time. You know, how do we go about, are we going to sit down renegotiate, or will it be an automatic renewal if nobody speaks up? Also, there is always the possibility that the present owner may sell the property. You will have to have some kind of a clause that this agreement passes with the sale. So, and either, there are plenty of things we need to discuss yet before we actually plant this thing out there.
Yeah, the key is to get the financing, financials all behind us, and then we can worry about the lease agreement and terms and conditions, correct? Any other further comments on the discussion side?
Well, I don't go over the five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
There you go. And you could reduce that too, John, if you wish to provide us with a grant. All those, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously?
I'd really like to thank Steve for all the help he's put in this project. I know for a fact that if it wasn't for him, it probably would not be happening.
Was that a unanimous vote?
Unanimous, yeah. Not to mention all the time spent on the telephone, Chuck. You got tired of me calling and I... He got tired of me calling and I.
I think we have our $900, $900 met just between Steve and I and Linda.
Okay, moving on. Kiosk, after two years, we have that on its way. Next issue is the newsletter status, Dan?
Good question. Status, last time I think we got together, we talked about different articles. And these are some of the topics that we had out there. And so I'd kind of like to get some feel from each of you as to whether something is or is not going to happen. Clerk's Corner, Linda's taking care of her articles. I have them in hand. So she did one on tax bill and traveling back from a historical perspective. We talked about Dunes Lake, a recap of our recommendations, maybe including something in there about the replacement funding for septic tanks, the thing that Greg Colthurst was working on. I don't know whether that is out there or not, or Dunes Lake, Chuck. I had your name penciled in there.
I'm sorry to say that I haven't done anything with the newsletter because I've been tied down with these other projects. But I did get a letter, matter of fact, two letters the other day from Soil and Water. You may want to just include them in the newsletter. One is a letter that was put together by the Sebastopol Sanitary District directing its users or informing its users to be careful as to what they introduce into the system as far as phosphorus and nitrates and other chemicals. And in the letter, it stated there was a pamphlet included also. I did not get the pamphlet, but it would go on explaining the problem and how you as a user of this system can help to remediate it. The other letter was directed at the farmers in the community stressing the fact that, and it included a map stressing the fact of certain fields that are highly contaminated with phosphorus and nitrogen and the use of best management practices to start reducing those levels by not applying any further material to those fields until they are reduced. So these are two, they're not very long letters, as I maybe just, those two would go in there.
As a customer of the sanitary district, I did receive that letter yesterday or the day before.
Well, I would like to, I would like to have some brief recap if we're going to use that to just kind of, and maybe.
When do you need this?
April, I'm going to try and see if we can have the articles by April 15th.
I'll see what I can do.
And/or maybe Greg, just, and it doesn't have to be, you know, over. I mean, I can use the, extract some of the stuff out of the two letters if it's appropriate. But I think, you know, maybe just some start and finish to where we left it off. And then I, and since I'm on Chuck, which I know you love at this moment, did you want to do anything with coastal byways or did you want to leave that?
Didn't you get enough tonight? Thought you were taking notes.
I got plenty of notes. Do we want to do anything with it or not? That was just another idea.
We should include a picture.
Well, I can, I think.
Can we include a picture?
I think we could put a picture of what this entire project's going to look like on its new location. So, and I'll get a little article with it.
Okay, doesn't have to be anything, just, you know, I figure we've been working on that. Now, John, we had talked about doing some kind of thank you and recap from the first responders for the contributions.
I was, talked about, talked to people about, and then you said a picture too?
Yeah, well, I thought.
That's going to be the tough one.
Well, I had a couple of ideas, which, I mean, we can do or not do. But I mean, there were a couple of organizations that, you know, made contributions which probably wouldn't mind publicity versus the ones that don't. But, you know, there might be Bay Shore, Clark Lake, or Glidden, and/or Chuck Stager. We could use that picture because he donated that, the winnings from that contest.
Right.
And anyhow, I just, we had down at Cheryl where Justin might do that. Have you talked to them on?
I, yes, I got the thank you, but we just, at the first responders meeting, they decided that if, there was a lot of people that said they did not want their names published.
But I'm not saying we publish them, I'm just saying.
So we don't publish anybody, a thank you to anybody? Because you don't want to step on anybody's toes that said, yeah, why isn't my name published?
Yeah, but if you don't, I mean, you can go both ways there. If you say there were a bunch of people that preferred not to.
It was brought up at our meeting and it was voted on, so that's the way it's going to be.
Okay, so you're going to do what? You have a thank you letter?
I have, I have a thank you letter that I'm going to kind of redo and then try and get everybody together with their dress shirts on and a picture.
Okay, so.
So, which is going to be the tough one.
Well, we can put blanks in there, you know, and character tiers or something.
What's that?
If you have a meeting the first week in April, I could take it.
Okay.
That'd be great. And then I have a note here that John's working with Victoria. Hello, Victoria.
John's working with Victoria.
We talked about a conservation subdivision, whether or not we wanted to include something like that in the, in the newsletter. And we had volunteered Victoria, I think you actually were here when we kind of volunteered you. Thank, thank you. But we'd also asked John to work closely with you to help massage that whole process and.
Let's amend our agenda, what do you think, for the next meeting? Make sure that I, we can discuss what needs to be in that newsletter article. That way we get more input.
Right, all right, I'll write it down.
When is your next meeting? Do you know?
11.
Yeah, the 11th, 11th.
So I'll try and have whatever I have ready, but then we can take a look and make sure that it's.
Super, thank you, Victoria, I appreciate that.
Dan, did we?
We had you for an article, but you dodged us.
Well, I'm thinking about, did we, did we publicize the contract with the power department? Did we write an art, did I write an article on that in the past? I mean, if not, I can write one for this one.
We wrote about the discussions. I can't recall whether or not we actually had the thing done at that time.
If we did find, and I won't do anymore, but if we, if you want an article on our current contractual relationship with Sturgeon Bay, I'd be happy to add something to that.
Okay, I'll, I'll go back and look at the last newsletter and see. I know we did some, but I can't.
It was in the tax bill insert last year?
That's, I knew it was.
Okay, so it is, it is out, it's not in the cap.
Okay, so we'll skip that. And then the last item on here was we had asked Dick Weidman to do a little.
Yes, Dick did come in, so I have a photograph of him. And he is working on an introductory article for himself.
Okay, so if, roughly right, if we can work towards something like middle of April, that would be great. And then we can try and get the thing out the door reasonably close to May.
Move out an article on expansion in the town as far as businesses, new home building that's, that's finally picking up.
Take a lot of research.
I have all that information.
Okay, moving on.
Okay, I got that down. We'll just, we'll see what's up. We also have not heard anything from the infamous chairman, if he was doing an article or not, so.
That's, if he's coming back, we're not sure.
That's true.
Tell us all about the weather in Florida.
There you go. Okay.
All right, next item on the agenda is the Clark Lake launch ramp status, Dan?
Let's get back to that. Okay, I think pretty much everybody's aware that we are going to replace the launch ramp on Town Line Road on Clark Lake. And we went about, through a process of having it designed and bid. And we opened the bids, I think it was the 22nd of March, 21st, 22nd of March. And we awarded the bid. It came in within budget just by, literally by pennies, which is good. At least we've, we've got it accomplished. We had hoped to have it started prior to April 1st, which is the official beginning of fish spawning season from the DNR's perspective, whether they do or not, I can't tell you. But any rate, due to all the winter conditions this year and all the ice, the companies that bid on this as well as the other types of work similar to that have been delayed. They're dredging in different places like Washington Island, Bailey's Harbor, Sister Bay, et cetera, et cetera. Therefore, they could not begin prior to April 1st. All of the bid responses came back after that. We had hoped to get an exception from the DNR to, since we were talking about such a small area, to perhaps proceed with the work after that date, after contacting the DNR and working with the engineering company. It appears that we will not be given an exception, which means that we'll be unable to start work until roughly right June 1st. It's a one-week project at the, at the most. So we're, we're shooting for a June 1st start. The, the couple of things for anybody that, that hears this is that the ramp that we have there will be temporarily repaired. We'll just patch the damaged portions and we'll put the steel ramp back in. It'll stay in the water until construction begins that first week in June. We will, however, not put the pier in because we have to bring a crane in to set the pier and to pull the pier out and then place it back. We're probably talking about another seven, eight, $900 that we'd have to spend on the project. So for the few weeks, we will not have a pier there. We'll not go back in until the construction project is completed.
Isn't he going to have a big high hole there?
Yeah, but he won't.
Can he set it in there?
The problem is we have to get those guys to come out. They take that monster dune buggy and take it out into the lake and drop it. And then they screw it down into the lake bed. So, and then we'd have to pick it out again and then we'd have to set it again.
Yeah, but afterwards.
Yeah, so anyway, we're, we talked to the people at Clark Lake. We talked to the association. They posted it in their publication on their website. If they're going to launch their boats there, they'll just have to deal without that for hopefully not very long. But I think that's everything on Clark Lake.
Good, thank you. All right, next item is the West Shore Drive property, 5411, and the status of property and non-compliance. I think we addressed this at the last meeting and the same issue is in front of us again. Apparently the shack, as it's addressed by Ms. Farrell, is in shoddy condition. And there apparently have been complaints that it should be razed or rebuilt. And the letter we got, or an email actually, she's asking that we bear with her because of financial constraints on her part, not to do anything until she sells the property. At this point in time, she states in her, in her email here that she would like to put the property up for sale and have this relationship with a realtor consummate it sometime in June. So essentially what she's asking for is a three-month delay in any action on the board. So it's open for discussion on how we want to handle this, if we want to accept the time constraints she's put on the, the whole, the whole sale, potential sale? Or do we want to move it along a little bit faster? I haven't heard anything negative from anyone around there. Has anyone here heard anything?
No, I, I can't see forcing her. I mean, as long as she sells it, you know?
Yeah, that's her intent, Courtney.
We cannot at our last meeting agree to not, or to no enforcement action for three months.
It was to not do anything for up to six months. And this is her response.
So we just, we just leave it as is?
Yeah, if we could have some, the only thing is, is if we could have something in the, with the realtor to say if, you know, it gets sold, that somebody has to tear it down so that the next, we aren't dealing with another guy after it's sold.
Unless it's repairable.
Legally, she would be responsible or required to put this on her conditions report at this point. She knows that the building needs to either be repaired or removed. And should she not list that, she would have some real problems.
Well, if anybody drives by.
It's pretty obvious.
Once she puts the listing up, you could call and inquire and you'd find out.
Like I said, I put it, I put a reminder on my calendar for June 12th, I think, to.
I can't see making her spend money just to tear something down that, you know, she probably does. She says she doesn't have, so then she would sell the property and then somebody would tear it down.
Okay. Finally, we get around to new business, the application for alcohol beverage Class B wine license. The name of the retail operation would be parallel to 44 Vineyard and Winery, Inc., doing business as Door 44 Winery to be located at 4020 State Highway, 4257. Sturgeon Bay, which is actually in the Granny Tommy's, Grandma Tommy's second building. That's in the process of being erected as we speak. So the request is in front of us here to issue a alcohol beverage retail license application for Class B wine license. And we do have Maria and Steve here tonight to answer any questions we may have before we take on this.
How many units do you have in that little building? Because this is unit 200. I said, how many units do you have in that building? Because this one is unit 200 after the.
I like being named a 100 as well.
I see.
Would anybody care to see?
The what?
The units.
I give a tongue count.
To all 200 of them?
It's hard to see this.
Going to need more than. Steve presented this to us the other day. It's a continuation of his area where all the buildings will have the same style and they will be interconnected as they go down. I believe you said the plan is for seven?
Plan someday, and it could be just Grandma Tommy's and Door 44. It could be two and it could be up to a total of six to seven buildings connected. And, but I'm in no rush for that. As I told Maria a while ago, and Steve, I'm just happy with the farm market and winery at this point. Something really has to intrigue me to put anything else there. And the winery intrigued me because it went so well with farm market. And the town of Sebastopol does not have a winery, which other municipalities do. And it doesn't have, I believe, a farm market, which, which other municipalities do. So I think this is good for Towns of Sebastopol, the winery and the farm market together. But I cannot fully say that there won't be another building someday connected. But each building has exterior entrances, like my building does. My building does two, Door 44 and Steve's building. And they'll be able to walk from Door 40, parallel, Door 44 to Grandma Tommy's from the inside. So, and the porches are going to keep wrapping. It's going to look the same, same redness, same colors, the old schoolhouse look. The porches are going to be extended. So it's, it's going to be pretty attractive, real attractive.
You have a very well-played out plan. It is very attractive and it will, nothing but enhance that area down there.
I can just imagine having a glass of wine, sitting at the park bench, looking at the kiosk.
When we had our original meeting, we were discussing the condo aspect of this project. And one of our supervisors was wondering where the people were going to come and where they were going to sleep and so forth. A little misunderstanding in the fact of whether it's a commercial condominium association versus a rental unit, sleeping accommodations type. There will definitely be no bedrooms in these facilities evidently.
That we know of.
Might use a vineyard someday.
They may have to sleep on a cot once in a while when they get so busy here this summer that they can't get home, but.
Okay, the licensed beverage retail license application would begin May 1st, 2013. That's when they would open business, at least be open for Memorial Day. That's when they would open business, at least be open for Memorial Day. And it would end June thirty, so this license is for a, actually, like a sixty-day period. And then, obviously, it will have to be renewed and approved starting July first through the next year. So, it would be a two-month license approval and then go for a full year after that. So, anyone have any other discussion? I'll introduce the motion to approve the.
Yeah, is this?
The retail license application.
Is this the same, that they, we have to have so many of these, right? We have one and.
No, this does not fall under the quota.
Oh, this is the other one?
This is wine only. It is a Class B liquor license, but it's wine only, and I had several conversations with the Department of Revenue, our agent there, and he has.
Yeah, there's no restriction on these.
There is no limit on wine only.
Okay.
Need a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of granting the license application signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, proposed. Motion carried.
Should we be open, May first? Is that the plan?
Hopefully, Memorial Day, we can.
Oh, okay. 'Cause we could come early to taste if it's.
And we love you guys early.
You know, you might have a captive audience, too, with the bridge ringing out and the bypass going, and they'll probably be backed up all the way in front of your place.
That's true.
Okay, takes care of new business.
No problem, thank you.
Hey, thanks for coming tonight. Thanks, Steve. Maria, nice meeting you. Nice meeting you, Steve.
Welcome you to the community and hope you have the prosperous year.
Yeah, we look forward to it.
Look forward to.
Don't stop anything.
Enjoying a good ride.
We'll try to do something before we actually open up. Then we'll see what's going on.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Nice.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Wisconsin Town Association, approval of membership dues and educational enrollment. Linda, you wanna handle that?
Well, our dues are staying the same. We haven't had an increase in dues for several years, so we're at the limit as far as population goes, so we automatically get the extra three hundred dollars. Anyway, annual dues, six ninety-five, same as last year. At our budget hearing last fall, we did discuss enrolling in the educational aspect, and they've actually reduced that now from one hundred dollars to fifty dollars. With a new board member coming onto the board, he's probably gonna want to, you know, learn about the board review and comprehensive plans and everything else. So, for fifty dollars, we could get all that training through the WTA website, whereas opposed to sending him just to the board review training, a whist line is twenty or forty dollars. So, we did budget one thousand dollars for memberships and dues, so six ninety-five for our regular town dues, fifty dollars for this. You know, it still gives us a little bit of a cushion, although we do have to be really careful with our budget this year.
I wonder why.
You know, I'm, there's lots of educational videos and topics out there. The Plan Commission is just one of them. You know, road bids and contracting and things like that. There's all kinds of topics out there. If we wanted to give it a try for a year and see if people take advantage of it for fifty dollars, it's a pretty good deal.
I move that we do this, including the educational piece, which I did last year myself.
I'll second it.
So, we have, we have two seconds.
No, I made a motion.
He made the motion.
He seconded it, and you seconded it.
I conferred.
Then give it to Chuck.
Then third it and be done.
Who's seconded by? Motion by Dan.
Dan seconded.
Seconded by.
Chuck and John. Put them both down.
Oh, the.
Set a precedent.
I thought the spinmeister was in Florida.
John.
All those in favor of the motion as proposed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, C, item C, ten, eleven, twelve, C, Door County Tourism Zone Commission and Beach Water Testing Program. I think Chuck has already covered that.
We've already covered that.
So, that is gone. The next issue here, our item, is the correspondence, and I'm sure everyone's read the correspondence. If you have any questions, please ask now, and we can briefly go through this. Port of Pier.
Doesn't impact us.
Yeah, it's just a company looking for some business and explaining how they would build piers on the lake or the bayside. We've got a letter here from the planning department to Mike and Melanie Sargent that was regarding that building to provide service for cars, and that's been approved. Conditional use permit is enclosed and subject to the conditions of the letter.
I was surprised to see in that letter that they did not mention the town's outdoor storage ordinance or anything that would need to be adhered to along with that permit.
I just wanna come down and visit this place in six months and take this document.
It's a little strange, though, when we sat and discussed that at a meeting in which three representatives from the planning department of, or Door County Planning Department were actually at the meeting, and it just kind of floats off into the distance.
If I may, I was at the RPC hearing, and they read the letter from Sebastopol into the record, and the letter from Sebastopol did not mention its ordinances, so they kept it to what Sebastopol said instead of adding words for Sebastopol.
But it also said, the letter said that we did not approve.
Yes, exactly.
I know, which is interesting, because they turned around and approved it anyhow.
Didn't we approve it pending there being certain criteria, setting into plans and all that?
If we get two, two votes, we fail.
Correct. In fact, my question regarding that, 'cause it goes back to the comprehensive plan, I think, I thought we had the final say in what we wanted done for, once we had the comprehensive plan updated, so that they couldn't overrule us.
Well, they can overrule us, but we have to go back through the process to veto it. We have to go through a whole process to say this doesn't fit and make it work with our comprehensive plan.
And what's that process?
I'm not exactly sure, but.
I guess my, I mean, I was opposed to it before. Nothing's changed, but I'm bothered by the fact that, you know, and I wasn't at it, Victoria, but, you know, they seem to have no value for our opinion one way or the other. So, kind of, that kind of bothers me. So, if we get to a point where we have a structure that comes up where we don't approve it, then I think we have to find out what our process is to go back and revisit it. I mean, I don't know what it is, but we should find out. If they do that, we should at least know what the next step is.
Shouldn't we do that before anymore?
The next time comes up.
Or when water goes over the dam?
Right.
Because, you know, this is approved as far as they're concerned. It'd be kinda difficult to go back, you know, a month or two or three later and say, hey, we don't approve.
But it was, it was gonna kind of be hard, it was hard to say you can't have it when we've already got some in the town.
Yeah.
We do.
It was a home-based business, that was the issue, and it was the same as the previous.
This one that the town board approved, where we, that fellow that had the boatyard or the boat repair business.
Right.
It was, it was almost identical situation. And the town, what, I think, when the RPC members were discussing, they asked, did Sebastopol say why? And Sebastopol did not say why in their letter. And so, it's very difficult for the people sitting at the RPC to figure out why. It wasn't in the letter.
I'm not sure of that, Victoria, because I can just grab the letter, and it was pretty much from our minutes, and I believe the last paragraph said that Vice Chairman Gurman, let's see, they should look at the commercial aspects in order to comply with the commercial regs, and I thought it said compliance with local ordinances, and that we would look at it again after those matters were addressed. I'm pretty sure that's what our.
The work that I expect did not apply, because what was the conclusion? Is that was like a red herring that had been brought up, because it was a home-based business, and it was a conditional use within a home-based business. It was not a commercial business. And the sergeants, and I think we got copies of it, amended their application to reduce the size of the building that they were going to do, and so there was just no handle. It was an hour. There was, you know, there was just no handle for that commercial issue that was concerning that came up at the board meeting.
Right, I remember that. That was only if they had it on the addition, but without the addition, they didn't have to deal with that, so.
Right.
The state got involved, twenty, twenty-five thousand cubic feet.
Right.
And if the sergeants reduce their building to below the twenty-five thousand, they do not need state requirements.
Right, and their building actually included a park that was only an enclosure, like a porch. And then they had considered that part of the building footprint, and it wasn't part of the building footprint, so it reduced further the amount of area that was being considered as a enclosure, a actual building.
And Victoria is right. We just approved a home-based business, and when you get a home-based business, you just, I mean, whether it's my car doing, you know, Clark's Lake Boat Ramp, or having boats sit around, or whatever, I mean, they're all subject to, you know, the ordinance, and we also, we already have a business, basically a home-based business out of doing mechanic work.
Well, he also is going to be.
Correct.
Coming into compliance. And there's a big difference between home-based business and commercial business, because totally different regs and ord, and restrictions.
But they never caught that, and he was just in last summer, first part of last summer.
Are you?
Before that.
Are you talking about my car or Jeff Peterson?
Jeff Peterson.
Jeff Peterson was two thousand and ten.
Okay, so two years ago, I guess.
Yeah, they added, they added this when they upgraded their zoning ordinance. They added that you could have auto repairs as a conditional use in a home-based business, and that was a change to the zoning code. And that made my car's business possible, and that made the sergeant's business possible, both of them possible, that kind of repair work as a home-based business.
Mr. Chairman, which item is this on the agenda?
It's under correspondence.
Correspondence?
Oh.
Yeah, it's just under correspondence.
I see.
It's the second, second piece of correspondence.
All I can recall, or all I remember, is the position we took on some multiple lots on Cave Point where a new home was built, and I think that was prior to the comprehensive plan. And we voted against it, and they approved it. And if you drive down that street, you see a house three feet from the edge of the road, and, you know, it's like, so I'm leery of, you know, I don't wanna set a precedent in the future that says just because we did it once means we, you know, we approve every one forever, but I don't know.
What question is, what recourse do we have at this point?
If we look at the.
I do not know. I can look into that and get back to you.
If you look at the next correspondence from independent inspections, he is specifying that SPS three-six-one dot zero-two-four-A specifies repair of motor vehicles is not under the state's definition of a home occupancy and is not exempt from commercial codes. The entire commercial code applies when going from non-commercial use to a commercial use. So, he still may be required to have commercial inspection.
This is Jeff, though.
Right, but if you apply that.
Yes.
Yes, Jeff Peterson is working with the building inspector Brett Timmy. They met here last week, actually, and they're working on compliance for Jeff, so Jeff will be compliant.
I guess my take, what Tom, I'll follow up what Tom said, which is, I guess if we were to have something different, let's make it easy, we were to have something different come up that we did not support, and they overruled us, then I'd like to know what the process is for us to go back and say, okay, our understanding is we have this authority or process. What is it that we physically need to go do to, you know, understand it better? So.
All right, so that would be an action item then. I don't think we need to go on it, but that'll be an action item to find out what the process is.
It should be an agenda item for next meeting.
Yeah.
For a future meeting.
You're getting ahead of yourself. That's an agenda item for next meeting.
Did you?
Okay.
All right, put that in for next meeting. Agenda item, next meeting. Chances are, I'll be here again, so who knows?
Well, it might be even interesting to have Brett Timmy come back and tell us the difference between this situation and the sergeant's situation.
Yeah, I think John and Timmy should probably get together and see what he has to say.
I mean, based on the letter, there's some confusion there, but.
Yeah, because he talks in Brett Timmy's letter about Peterson, he talks about exhaust and heat and making sure it's environmentally safe to work inside, et cetera, et cetera. I don't, I didn't see any of that in this, this letter from the planning department from RPC.
The, the state commercial code is a totally different thing than the zoning department.
Right.
So, there is no reason that the zoning department would probably mention the state commercial code. That's up to us to enforce as adopting the UDC code, so.
But too, then, when you, when you look at something too, you gotta look at it that they're applying for a home-based business. You can't say, well, what if this happens? What if that happens? What if, I mean, you could, what if forever? You know, they're subject to, to rules and regulations, and if they don't abide by them, then somebody's gonna enforce them. You're always, you're all worried about having too many cars there or this. Well, we have an ordinance that says you can't have too many cars there. So, if they do, we'll get somebody in there with an ordinance and get a few of the cars taken out. I mean, if you wanna sit and say, what if, what if, what if, this could be a long meeting, or ours could be a long meeting. So, we just look at the information that's in front of us, and we come to the best decision at the planning level and recommend to the town board, and, you know, then we recommend to the RPC, and the RPC can only go with, by what's in the letters, how many people object to it, and what's presented in front of them. I mean, they can't sit there and say, well, you know, if he has one extra car, I can't vote for that, so.
All right, it's on, it's on the agenda for the next meeting. Next piece of correspondence is IIL Building Recap. I just noticed it's got Mark N. Stee, it's S.T., isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Elste.
A misspelled there.
And that, I got my pile here out. Is that the one that also has the February building permits on it?
No, that's a billing, February permits issued, yeah, next page.
And I guess in that one, I have a question for Chuck, 'cause this is, this is the one where they've issued a permit now for that off-premise sign on the corner down there in Institute, Chuck? Isn't this the one that was in question since we went and became the byways that wasn't supposed to be there, but now it looks like they've issued a permit for it?
It's an amended, it's an amended permit.
I don't know the difference, Linda, between amended and irregular.
It is a sign we've been talking about, yes.
Isn't, wasn't it, that that was supposed to come down?
Well, that's the coastal byways interpretation that that sign should have never been erected. What the county did, I don't know how it got there. They were notified that we felt it was a violation, and the last I heard was they were decided how to handle the situation.
That sounds.
I think this is a case where they let it in by mistake, but they will not admit their mistake, so they're going to re-permit it. I also understand that the one further up the road in Jacksonport is supposed to be removed. I drove past it the other day, and it's still standing there. So, they may just be waiting for better weather, the weather to do it, but.
Why would they remove that one, Chuck? Is there, is that different than this guy's?
I don't see a difference. The only fact may be that this one is on premise where the other one is off premise.
You got a letter, Victoria?
Well, I think our coastal byway chairperson is working with. Well, I think our, our coastal byway chairperson is working with the DOT
Okay.
To resolve whether they are legal or not, correct?
Oh, cool. Okay. That's exciting.
All right, next letter is the independent inspections letter to Jeff Peterson. I think we already addressed that. Thank you notice from Jane Muller. Thanks for allowing us to hold the soup bowl making event at the town hall. Jane Muller.
Miller.
Muller, M-O-E-L-L-E-R.
Miller.
Jane, Miller.
Sebastopol.
Chair calls it Muller, it's Muller.
Potato, patato. I agree with you.
Tomato, tomato, potato, patato.
All right.
All right, then we have a notice from Charter. The franchise fee for October 1 through December 31st, 6371. That's going to be...
Got a question on that one, Tom.
Yeah.
Line four of that first paragraph, right after with Charter.
Yeah.
This payment specifically complies with the language found in the franchise agreement, whether the agreement is based on percentage, flat rate, or per stub payment. Now, is that pertaining to the problem we discovered where?
Yes.
Certain areas of our town, the franchise fee is being paid into the town of Sturgeon Bay and other areas, it's the town of Sebastopol and so forth, that that would be on the, maybe we're on the flat rate or the percentage rather than the per stub?
Or Peter Point or Booster Point, and they go by nodes, and the nodes don't necessarily comply exactly with town limits. So their nodes are in a few houses, and those houses, node-wise, are going to Sturgeon Bay where, from a, a land perspective or a landline or a municipality line, they should be coming to us, so that, that problem still exists.
But then on the same token, we could be getting payments from the town of Sturgeon Bay or the town of Jacksonport because of the location of a node.
Nobody knows the problem.
Nobody knows the problem.
No, no one knows the problem.
That's the problem.
We don't know.
But we're getting ripped off all over, because on, on the coastal byways, we don't even have, our state park isn't even in our area, it's in Jacksonport along with Clark's Lake.
A lot of changes out there.
We're getting robbed all over, aren't we?
Yeah. It would be interesting to know where these nodes are located then, and how, how many homes are hooked to a node or whatever it may be, because
You have to do node hunting.
At the situation where I am, I'm five miles from the city of Sturgeon Bay. I'm not even connected in any way, shape or form through the town, and if I'm that far out, are all the people down the bayshore all the way to the city limits being lost?
What you have, what you have to do, quite frankly, is go door to door, take a look at their bill, find out where their money is going, and then call Charter and make a complaint. Charter will not give you any information about any of this information because it's proprietary competitive information. The only way to get it is to knock on doors, look at their bill, and say, and then call up Tim Vowell or whomever at Charter and say, these are the houses that the billing percentage should be coming to Sebastopol. So it's, it's, it can be done, but it's not an easy process.
Well, you know...
You're not going to get a whole lot of support from Charter on that.
It would be, if you want to, you could put a small article in the newsletter, and we could see what kind of response we got. Just say, look at your bill.
We already...
I think we've run that twice already.
We've publicized it.
Run it on the cable channel.
Yeah.
We put it in one insert, and I think it was in the last newsletter, too.
I got one, but it was somebody, one was misreading the announcement.
They thought we were going to give them $24,000, so they called it.
To me, it's, it's a node question.
All right, moving right along. So if you want to knock on doors, Chuck?
Yeah.
Hold it forward to a, a report for the other next meeting.
Ask for donations for the water quality and the coastal byway and Boat Ramp.
All right, so that's $24,000 per annum. Department of Natural Resources, Linda, if you would address that. Needs payment worksheet for tax year 2012.
Right, so in lieu of a tax bill, the DNR gives us a payment in lieu of taxes. As you can see, it's a substantial amount, $7,221. However, the town only retains $549 of that, and the other, the remaining goes to the other taxing entities, so.
All right, so it's $549.
Yeah.
That covers some of the kiosk.
Linda, does that, does that, do they identify what that is, what property that is?
Um, I'm not sure that it came with this notice, Dan, but somewhere along the line, we do have a list of all the properties, yes.
So like now, next year, we would have all of the property that became part of the Dick Bowden's included in that, right?
They work with, they work with Charter Communications.
They could be, yes, this is the DNR.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Next letter of correspondence is Department of Admin, Local Government Report, 2013 Legislative Session, A Citizen's Guide. Basically, it's a legislature's Wisconsin Legislative Notification Service makes following the legislative process easier for interested citizens. So it's something that if citizens want to get interested in the legislative sessions in Madison, they have a script here they can follow and get involved.
Cool.
Fire Department Emergency Medical Service Funding. This really doesn't impact us because I think our relationship with Sturgeon Bay Fire Department is probably something they do.
Well, I think it does, since somewhat.
Well, they talk about grants for operations safety vehicles, communication projects, fire prevention, so I have maybe on the...
Well, if we give, if we have an accident on the highway, and, you know, it, you can get money back, but you have to keep track of every accident, and you have to be so careful with HIPAA laws that you don't put a name out there or anything, but you can get money back if you want to basically do a lot of paperwork.
I think we agreed that we were going to try that once, didn't we, Linda?
Yes.
Right, it has to be on a, I'm not sure if that's this program or a different program. It has to be on a state highway, it has to be a spillage of a hazardous material or extraction or something.
We had that discussion with Tim from the Sturgeon Bay Fire Department, and he said the paperwork was not worth the effort.
Yeah, right.
More or less did not want to do it.
I think the same person that's going to check out on the houses in the nodes for the charter business could handle this.
Okay.
In light of what John's saying, though, doesn't paragraph three maybe help out? If I'm reading it right, you can apply for grants and so forth, that may help pay for your new defibrillators or your radios and other equipment?
Yes.
So I mean, that would something maybe we could look into if we're going to have some future expenses in that category.
Right. I know there, nine times out of 10, they put a lot of stipulations on, but we do have, you know, a lot of the stipulations covered, so, because we have people that are, you know, certified in different things, and, so we could look into that, yes, for a grant. The defibrillators are taken care of, though, so.
If you noticed in the vouchers, the voucher approvals, we did receive all of the 15 brand-new defibrillators.
That's correct.
And at a substantial reduction in cost, nearly half of what
That's good.
We had anticipated, so.
It went in a joint effort with Sister Bay and Liberty Grove and Northern Door First Responders.
So 15, 15 are in?
15 defibrillators.
That's all we're getting right now.
Yes.
And what's the total number?
The total number is 15.
That's it for...
How many do we, did we need?
That's, that's what we need right now. We can have, we can have up to 20 first responders, but we have 14 right now, so the extra defibrillator is out by Linda, sitting in the, in your
Cabinet.
Cabinet back there, and then back in the kitchen, there's a, a really good older one. And the older ones will work just fine up until they go bad, and nobody, nobody can fix them, so we have a few of those to look at or to put out in different places.
What would be interesting to do is, maybe at the next meeting, is why don't you just grab one, bring it out, and just kind of spend five minutes and say, here's how it works if you ever need to use it? Be interesting to do.
No, I won't volunteer.
Well, you don't, I mean, I'm not saying plug it in and all that, but, you know...
Why don't you, why don't you, you should go to a healthcare...
You could take the AED course at NWTC.
You could take the AED course.
Very interesting. I've taken it a couple times.
If I put it on tape and say something different, then the wrong person gets a hold of it and uses it the wrong way.
Right.
So I'm not a cer, I'm not a certified instructor. If you want to do something like that, we would need a certified instructor in there.
Well, why do you have one in the kitchen?
For events here. If anybody is licensed at CPR, they're licensed for a defibrillator.
Right.
So they can go and grab it.
So I mean, does somebody know that it's there? That's why...
It's marked, Linda's got it marked very well.
It's marked, yes.
You don't have to be licensed to apply a defib, right?
You don't have to be licensed, but you should take the certification and know what you're doing.
Right.
How many people here have taken it?
You put it on the bottom of your sheet.
One, two?
Two.
Well, I feel safe with you two around, then. Moving on, community planning.
I have no idea, Linda, new.
Okay. Mr. Leo Zipper, chairman, whoever that fellow is, the Town of Bailey's Harbor amended comprehensive plan, and Leo has an attached CD copy of their 2012 amended Town of Bailey's Harbor comprehensive plan. I, I suspect that he has probably reviewed that already in Florida.
Yeah.
Best management practices to protect groundwater, Heinz Emerald Dragonfly Larval sites. We went through that presentation.
Bernie.
Read that for your own edification. County Clerk's office, a bunch of amended zoning ordinances, again, you can read those at your leisure. And the last piece is how to run annual town meetings, and I suggest that whoever's going to be vice chair, read that. Notice of timber cutting, I missed that one. That must be in the, probably in zoning, in the back of the zoning amendments. Just a notification of wood that's going to be harvested for pulp, Randall Weist, Muller Road. It's, um... All right, so that takes care of correspondence. Announcements, public test for spring election, Wednesday, March 27th at 10:00 a.m., Sebastopol Town Hall. Linda, just jump in if you want to add anything.
No, we're required to do a public test of our equipment, and we use real ballots, and we, it's just like almost a mini-election. We run the ballots through, we mark the ballots, run them through, we test our equipment to make sure they're counting properly, so we hand count and we machine tally just to make sure that the machines are working correctly.
And when do we get the election results?
If you'd like to come to the public test at 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday morning, you'll, you can see the results.
Spring election, Tuesday, April 2nd, polls open 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Annual town meeting, Tuesday, April 16th, starts at 6:30. Mark that on your calendar as opposed to 7:00. Sebastopol Plan Commission, Thursday, April 11, 7:00 p.m., that's here in the town hall. Door County Unit of WTA, Thursday, April 18th, at Liberty Grove, that starts at 7:00 p.m. And the Board of Supervisors, Monday, April 22nd, 7:00 p.m. at this town hall. And do we have any agenda items for next meeting?
I'd like to discuss the amendment of our ordinance as far as issuing permits when there are back taxes and so forth, that we maybe start including building permits and any other permits the town may offer.
Okay.
You can put on there the process for appeals to the RPC.
Yeah.
We'll talk about it in our comprehensive plan meeting.
Anything else for the next meeting? Hearing done. The motion to adjourn is appropriate.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.